Good evening. We'll call tonight's meeting to order and announce a quorum is, is a quorum present? Yes, okay. First item of business is the workshop session. City manager, do you want to, I will go through the discussion, regular agenda items and consent agenda. Is there a change to that, city manager?
No, sir. No, the workshop, we have two items on workshop tonight.
Okay, we'll do the agenda first, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You got the presentation in A, then B, we have public hearing, item one. Anybody have any questions on item one?
I believe this is the one, Mr. Buskey, that they've requested continuation of.
That is correct. To the next meeting, correct, Julie?
Yeah, to the February 15th meeting.
Okay, so if somebody would take that. And now, item two. Julie, if I skip a page, just tell me.
Okay.
Now we're down to the consent agenda. Anybody having questions on those? Nothing on the consent agenda? Now we're down to regular hearings. Item nine. Item 10. Item 11. Donna, do you want to say anything now?
On item 11, I can. Yeah, so mayor and council, we've talked to you about this a couple of different times. You'll remember that this is actually general fund money, the CARES money that came to the city when to pay for police and fire services. So we then transferred general fund money to this special fund, and it can be used for anything COVID-related, as council has approved it. And so what I've talked to you about in the past is some of the operating issues. We talked about the transfer to the RIS fund because of the potential of workers' comp claims, death cap claims that we could have. It's not what we've added to the list, is money to pay for overtime for fire and police. As you know, we are in the vaccination process, and so we have been running some of one of the sites, and that does take a tremendous amount of staff, not only fire, who's actually administering the vaccines, but certainly public services staff and police staff to operate these sites. It's fairly staff-intensive. They use a lot of volunteers, but volunteers don't always show up. And so we do have a lot of staff pressures here. So I'm asking you to transfer another half million so we can assure we can bring people in on overtime to make sure our vaccination sites work flawlessly.
Okay. Item 12. Nothing? And then we will have a closed session, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we do.
Then I'll go back to item B, community needs survey.
So tonight, we have Chris McGinn, that's going to talk to you about the different funding sources that the city has received related to COVID, mostly related to CDBG funding. It's gotten fairly complicated because we have a number of different buckets. So we thought it would be very helpful to go back and walk through the various ways this money can be spent, and then really to focus on the needs of the community. So I'll turn it, Claire, are you going to introduce, are you involved in this, or strictly Chris? You're muted.
Actually, it's going to be a joint effort tonight, so Chris McGinn's going to start us off, and then Ashley, myself, and Mindy are all going to join in, in our respective areas.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you and Chris.
Thank you, mayor and council. I just want to make sure, can everybody hear me okay, and can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to start off by saying that staff, Ashley and her CDBG team have done a great job of keeping track of everything that's been coming to us. And so, you know, we felt like it was an excellent time with all these different funding types coming to us to kind of explain to council, you know, where we've, where we've left off, and, let's see if I can advance the slide here, and kind of where we're going. So with that being said, you know, where we, where we left off with council was that the CB1 funding, the $452,000, we've, we've already allocated $211,000 of that. We've also flagged 20% of that total funding for admin costs. What's important to know about these funds is that they can be used for anything COVID-related for the next three years. And, and something important that we've already done is that we've done a drawdown of almost $23,000 for things that staff have been involved in, and when I say staff, that's just CDBG staff, have been involved, and that includes loving our community call center, along with some, some other items, which would include the survey, that, that we've already spent a portion of these, of these funds. Also, what you see here is $150,000, and that's currently not allocated, and that's due to us having a little bit of difficulty running into the federal requirements and how LISD collects their, their data to, to assist with the LISD connectivity project. And we'll be talking a little bit about that. One proposal that we have tonight is to shift that funding source to COVID-19 emergency response funding. And to explain that a little bit more, you know, you can see that of the CB1 allocations, we've had our nonprofits request funds, New Hope Learning Center was the only agency that received their, their full requests, and so we have seven other nonprofits that have not received their full funding request. So if we were to reallocate that $150,000, we could go back to some of these agencies and, and look at them receiving their full funding request. And now, talking about CB3 COVID funding, we were awarded $756,000, a little bit more than that. And we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, IDing the community priority needs because we feel that, you know, when we did the first survey during COVID-1 funding, you know, that was, that was back in May of 2020, so things, things may have changed a little bit now. And, you know, we're going to talk to council a little bit about what information came from our, our CDBG advisory board, our public hearings, and also our most recent survey, that, the information that we found from, from the survey that we completed just, just a few weeks ago. If, if we're able to get some priority needs lined out, then that would mean some changes to our annual action plan, and then a release of our notice of funding availability. So what we heard out of these public hearings is some of the same things that we saw when we did our first survey, you know, some of the thing, same things were coming back up, mental health, rent, utilities, second chance housing, that means, you know, building up people's credits that, that has been damaged, still seeing domestic violence and childcare. Those things were, were still showing up on, based on the responses of our, of our nonprofits that, that show up to our public hearing meetings, and in addition to the information that we found on our survey. But there were two, two things that were showing up that were new, and those items were mortgage assistance and food insecurity. So when we're talking about food insecurity, that means folks that are having to go to our food banks to, to pick up food, you know, what we do know is that in December, 31,000 Texans filed for unemployment. And although a lot of the, the food banks in Denton are not necessarily tracking folks that are coming by the food bank for the first time, the ones that are, are showing that anywhere from 40 to 60% of folks picking up food are first-time customers, and they're definitely noticing that the folks, that, that it's a different segment of, of the normal population that is picking up food. They're also noticing that it's a 300% increase from prior years of, of daily visits. We also know that CARES funding was used to purchase bulk purchasing of meat and, and milk products. So we know as, as unemployment continues, that this is going to be a need going into 2021. What we found from our survey results, this particular survey that we sent out is slightly different. We, we hope to get a bigger response from outside of our agencies. We did hear from a faith-based organization, so we had 19 agencies respond. Like I said, this information is pretty new. It was a survey that was just completed January the 6th, and I think one thing that's very important is, is we're noticing that the nonprofits are, are not able to raise funds as efficiently as they were prior to the pandemic. And, and so, you know, not having the ability to raise funds as well as, as, as they could in person, in virtual mode, is affecting just the nonprofits that responded to us, and, and the amount of $4.3 million. We're also seeing that reflected in our faith-based organizations, and, and so all of that goes into, you know, they're not able to build their budgets the way that they had expected, and, and not provide as much outreach to the community as, as they had, had budgeted. Basic items coming from the survey that we were seeing, rent, utilities, food, and that would include fresh produce, mental health, and, and that, that's not just related to being able to serve mental folks that are in need of mental health services, but also the, the infrastructure that's needed to support additional staff is, is not necessarily there. You know, other needs that we're still seeing, childcare, unemployment assistance, and we know that none of the new funding covers mortgage assistance. And so that's, that's also something that, that we're thinking about, how to handle. Other items are, are because of the pandemic, which are on the right-hand side there, but definitely a significant amount of cost. And so, you know, we have, we have these needs in the community, but then we also look to our nonprofits to see who has capacity and, and to be able to administer these funds. And so, one, one of the nonprofits that's done an amazing job has been the United Way. And you can see of the CARES funding that over 23% of those applications processed were for Louisville residents. And you're seeing the number of individual households in Louisville, almost 25%. And the total number of funds that, that United Way worked with, $6.6 million, of that amount, 1.5 million were, were given to Louisville residents, which is a pretty amazing thing. They did this with the help of some additional staffing and, and their interns, and, and just increased the, the volume that they were doing. So they, they've done a pretty amazing job considering their increased workload. I know that Claire's been in contact with the county of, of some of the specifics on this, so I'm going to let her kind of talk a little bit more about that specifically.
Thanks, Chris. So you can see at the bottom that note, basically, at the beginning, the CARES funding was given to local entities to be used until December 31st, 2021. And of course, that was when all of us thought this was going to be over a lot faster than it really was going to be over. And then on, when it got close to that end of December timeframe, it was extended. So the federal government did allow the county to use that funding beyond that date instead of having to return the money or not be able to access that money. However, because of all of the additional costs that Denton County is having to deal with, with vaccine distribution, of course, they've been ramping up for this for a while, a lot, a lot longer than many of us were really thinking about logistics. I'm sure Tom was, but many of us, day-to-day people, were not thinking about it. They were preparing for this rollout. So a lot of those funds had been pushed over to the vaccine distribution, as well as to logistics associated with that. And so really, what we were thinking about was, or assuming, was that this money was going to run out pretty soon. And so the county did extend, provide 771,000, a little bit over that, to continue until January 22nd, and that was going to be a Band-Aid, and until additional funding came, was injected into our community. So I, on the next slide, you can go to the next slide, Chris. You can see that we, city, the cities, as well as United Way, were trying to find any type of source of money that we could bring into our community to replenish, because we wanted to keep this United Way funds rolling for our community, because there still was a need. So that first pot of money is CDBG CV2. So CV1 and CV3 money come directly to larger entitlement cities. Those are those cities that receive CDBG funds. The only ones in Denton County are Louisville and Denton. The rest of CV money, for CDBG CV money, went to the state, and they distribute that to smaller cities throughout the state. Like many local agencies, there's been a difficulty in spending the money as fast as they needed to under that CARES funding guidelines. And so the state opened it up to the larger cities to apply for this CV2 fund. So we were asked, are you interested in applying for this? And of course, Louisville and Denton raised our hand and said, heck yeah, we're, we want to get some more money in our community. So we partnered with the city of Denton in writing our applications to basically receive money and pass through the United Way, just to keep the program running. We were awarded that dollar amount, so it was not as much, of course, as that large CARES funding, but it's 150, a little over 151,000 for Louisville alone. That goes to Louisville citizens. And the, it is for Texas Emergency Rental Assistance, but it's also this Texas Eviction Diversion Program. And basically what that is, is they hold back 10% of that, of the awarded amount. That pot of money is set aside, and what happens is when, if someone actually goes and is evicted, or goes through eviction proceedings and has made it through the, the cracks, and they're now in front of the JP, the justice of the peace then can refer them to this pot of money. So it's really for those, you know, those situations where no, someone's not been proactive, they didn't know about this rental assistance program, and it's that last-ditch effort to keep them in their, in their homes. The other pot of money was this Emergency Solutions Grant. I know, council, that you had seen this previously, and this was brought to us by United Way. They applied for this money. It's really focused on homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing. This was the dollar amount that United Way received. The cities, city of Denton and city of Louisville, had to put up some money on the front end that will be reimbursed. So we had committed, and council had seen this, $500,000, that we are working through an agreement right now with United Way, to basically provide them that 500,000, but as the money is used, it's reimbursed through this COVID funds, and then it will come back to the city of Louisville. Next slide. And I'm going to pass it off to Ashley.
So a part of the last assistance package, relief package that came out through the federal government was this Emergency Rental Assistance, or ERA. And only communities with populations over 200,000 were eligible for this funding, and Denton County qualified. None of the cities within the county did, but the Denton County applied on January 12th, and then on January 20th, they announced that they were awarded over $20 million. And this funding is specific for rental and utilities assistance. And we're pretty excited that Denton County has agreed to, again, work with United Way and funnel this money into the CRF program. And right now, they're working through the specifics of a MOU, and to get that money into our community again very quickly. Some exciting things about this funding and the MOU is that the residents that met that three-month cap with the original CARES funding, and they were not able to receive any more funding for rental utilities, that they're going back to zero. So they are able to receive assistance again through United Way CRF program. Another great thing about this new MOU is that the county has agreed to increase the months of assistance for both rental and utilities assistance to six months from three months. And the target date for this MOU to go into effect is February 1st.
So this is, just to clarify, when we started putting together this presentation, we, we're not aware that we were going to get that funding, so we were coming to you with a much more dire situation. So we're very happy and excited because we feel like we've got a, a really good plan of attack for our citizens, and, and making sure that they can get the assistance they need now.
Definitely. Another funding source is the United Way's Barrier Fund. This funding source was created when we look at the, all the federal funding that's available to our nonprofits and all the red tape that comes with it. So having a fund of last resort that doesn't have as many strings attached that can be in our community, that, there is a max amount, of course, with this, that's requested of $1,000, but examples of some requests can be driver's licenses, or bus tickets, job training, and even rental and utilities when a resident has reached that three-month cap. In fiscal year 1920, we provided 25,000 to the Barriers Fund, but then in April of 2020, we pulled 11,500 from that to contribute to the United Way's COVID Relief Fund, which left about 9,000, a little over $9,000 in the Barriers Fund. And some data on Louisville-specific resident requests, from May to December of 2020, there was almost $17,000 in requests, but not all of them were approved. The main requests were rents for those residents that had reached that three-month cap and were not able to find any other resource for rental assistance, motel stays, and car repairs for those who needed their car to get to their jobs so they could stay housed. So currently, there's less than $500 in Louisville-specific funds, so that means that they're not taking any Louisville-specific requests right now. And then with our new administration, there's a proposed legislative package called the American Rescue Plan, and that's going to call for extending the eviction and foreclosure moratorium until September 30th, and providing an additional $30 billion in rental and utilities assistance. And on top of that, another $5 billion in emergency assistance to secure housing for people experiencing or at risk of homelessness. And some examples they gave of that was purchasing a hotel for congregate stay for a homeless shelter. A key thing that I want to point out is the only time they talked about homeowners assistance was in the foreclosure moratorium. There was no mortgage-specific assistance in this plan.
Okay, so this is a lot of information, and I'm not going to go through all of this. Mostly, this is, we wanted to provide all these data points to you so that you kind of knew, okay, next steps, as well as when would that funding be available? But the, the most important things on here are those targeted needs. So staff took heed last time from city council that what they wanted to do when deciding what targeted needs they wanted to spend the CV funding on, the CDBG money on, they wanted to see the full picture about what, what all the pockets, buckets of money are actually trying to solve, what problems are being addressed by those, so that there's not a duplication. And so we wanted to put those all out on a line for you so that you can see. We also wanted to focus on, when we did the survey, what those needs were currently in our community, and if we were going to be proposing CDBG CV funding be spent on something, we didn't want to spend it on something that the, the county's ERA funding might be spending it on, again, to avoid those duplication of benefits. So the important things here tonight, just to let council know, is on that column one, it's CDBG CV1, and you can look at that unallocated amount, that $150,000. So that dollar amount was originally for LISD, and you will see in our last slide, we are proposing shifting the funding out of federal funds, instead pulling that funding, so we'll still give LISD the same amount of money, but it would be pulling out of our general fund. The money we got from CARES, that now is really our general fund dollars, we would like to focus that money on LISD. And like Chris said, there was just a difficulty with regard to the CDBG reporting requirements, and then all of the privacy issues related to students. We just were having a heck of a time lining all of that up. We could have gotten, we, we could get there, but I can tell you, we've had meetings with their higher-ups and their grant writers tirelessly, and it's just, it was just going to be a very difficult way to get there. And so that $150,000, we are proposing that we would reallocate those to the other agencies that were part of that CV1 funding. So if you remember, Chris had gone through all those nonprofit partners, and how many of them did not receive their full funding, we can reallocate those evenly between those and let the CDBG board handle that. Those would have to come back to council as amended agreements anyway, but that's what we are proposing with that $150,000. Next is that CDBG CV3, that's $756,899. So that's the new pot of money we've received, and we went out and did that survey of what the current needs are. Obviously, some of them were still the same, so when, when we were talking about reallocating that 150,000, that is going towards needs that are still, I mean, we've identified those in the survey as they still exist. But this new dollar amount, we are proposing doing a NOFA, so that's a Notice of Funding Availability, through our CDBG process, to focus on food insecurities, mental health services, mortgage assistance, because remember, none, none of the other pots of money, we're going to help with mortgage assistance, and childcare services. And then finally, the other point on this, on this page that's of greatest importance is just to see that that Barriers Fund is reduced down to $412. Now, that $412, I will say that Denton just re-upped their amount. I think they, I can't remember how much it was, about $20,000 that they put in, maybe a little bit more than that, in their Barriers Fund, so Denton residents are able to pull from this and get the assistance, whereas Louisville is not currently. We will be asking as well for some of that CARES funds, which is now general funds, to be used to replenish that Barriers Fund. I wanted to pause here and see if council had any concerns or thoughts about that reallocation of CV1, that allocation of CV3, and of the Barriers Fund, or any of those targeted needs?
I'm all in. Anybody have any questions?
No, it looks good to me.
Makes sense.
Brendan, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, it looks good to me.
Good?
Same here.
Okay, we can go to the next page then. So that, that leaves us with wanting to identify if there are any types of gaps in those fundings, right? So we, we tried to make sure there was no duplications, but what gaps were there? So there is a gap that we've identified with regard to mortgage assistance and mental health. And those are because, even though we're providing CDBG funds for mortgage assistance and mental health, that really only helps people that are low to moderate income. So if, for example, there is a person that works for, I don't know, trying to think, is a manager of a restaurant, and that manager has a good income on a year-to-year basis, and they're a lot low to moderate income, but suddenly they lose their job because of COVID, the, the restaurant closes. Well, when you're looking at it from a CDBG standpoint, they're going to be looking at your income over that year. What's your household income? They're not going to be looking at, well, were you affected by COVID? Maybe you don't, you didn't save up any money, and you may lose your house because you can't pay your mortgage, although there is the, the moratorium on that. But still, is the assistance of that mortgage, it, it's one of the things that's not covered. But still, is the assistance of that mortgage, it's one of the things that's not covered. The same with mental health. All the CDBG funds is going to low to moderate income people. Now, I will say that, you know, obviously, we don't want to have someone like myself who just, maybe I just want to go see a therapist, and I'm going to try to get access to this money. It's not to have people who have jobs get access to this money, right? It's to have people that have actually had, been affected by COVID, have lost their job, their household income has been affected. So these are gaps, and we'll talk about potential other gaps. Really, it's, it's kind of like the Barriers Fund, where the Barriers Fund is meant to be where you, where nothing else is helping you with regard to, nothing else, you've basically fallen through the cracks on everything else, and this is the only funding source available. But again, the Barriers Fund only gives you up to $1,000. So this would be additional monies that provides that flexibility for those gaps. Can we go to the next slide? And then the other thing to talk about, and I'm going to hand this off to Mindy, because she is the most qualified of all of us to talk about this, is dealing with food insecurities. We talked about how we have some CV funding, the COVID CDBG money that we would like to put towards food insecurities. But that really just goes, more than likely, is going to go to help food banks purchase more money, purchase more food, excuse me. What it doesn't do is grow capacity in our community. And so I wanted Mindy to talk about some other options that we could help fund.
Thank you. Just a little bit ago, you heard Chris mention how food insecurity is a major issue that was communicated to us from our community partners, that residents are dealing with in our community right now. And food insecurity is something that requires a little bit of outside-the-box thinking and innovation to effectively address, especially right now. There's two different ways that we are considering looking at that. The first would involve community gardens. And there's two different ways that we could look at our community gardens here in Louisville. The first is to look at, how can we support and supplement what's happening already at our local gardens that are already distributing this produce and have these relationships with our nonprofits? How can we increase their capacity and support what they're doing? We have the Rich Lebkey Garden, and we also have Veterans Produce, both of which are providing fresh produce already. The other option that we are considering is how can we support these community gardens that are being maintained, or that are supporting and serving a low to moderate income population in our community? The second idea that we have has to do with something called food recapture. And food recapture looks at, how can we divert this food waste that's still usable out of the landfill in a way that's coordinated through some networks that we already have? So you're partnering with restaurants, local grocers, and you're getting that food that's still edible, still consumable, but maybe not able to be sold? And you're diverting it from the landfill into a nonprofit, or to people that are experiencing food insecurity, so that you're not only keeping it out of the landfill, but you're also helping support people that are in need in the community.
Okay, to the next slide. So I'm going to hand this over to Donna to finish this up. But again, this, so the beginning part, Donna can kind of talk to you about, which is really the, what we've been, what we've pulled out, I think, in this agenda, as well as previously, from that general fund dollars, which we are calling the COVID Emergency Response Fund. But then down below, everything in gray are the things that we talked about. So that LISD connectivity, the Barriers Fund replenishment, the COVID gap funding, and food insecurity. Those are proposed numbers. Obviously, the $150,000 for LISD, that would be to make them whole, that we've been working towards all along. But the others are really recommendations, and I'm going to pass it off to Donna and see if she wants to add anything to this slide.
So council, I talked to you earlier about the item that we have on your agenda tonight, number 11, which is approving what you see above the line, that 3.7 remaining balance being impacted by that 150 that you approved earlier. And then the additional tonight would be a million for the RIS fund. You'll remember, I talked about the, the potential death claims, certainly the health claims that we have. And remember, RIS fund obviously sometimes supports the health fund, because we have to do a transfer into that trust. So that's why we always put it into the RIS fund first. Additional COVID-type equipment and testing, and then the overtime to assist with vaccine distribution. I think it's really unknown as to what other needs may come up related to COVID. That's why I keep coming to you in bits and pieces and asking for your consideration. If you're supportive of the changes tonight, we can come back to you later with this additional list that you see. Or you actually could revise item number 11, if you're okay with those four items that you see. We could go in and fund that tonight also. We could do it either way. And so I think it's important that we replace that Barriers Fund. I think it's important that our residents also have, you know, that coverage. We certainly want to work with LISD on connectivity. And then I think staff did a great job in explaining the COVID gap funding that's needed and the food insecurity issue. So council, I can just respond to any questions that you might have. You'd still have a balance there remaining of over $3 million that we would continue to monitor and use throughout the year for other COVID-related issues.
Donna, I have a quick question.
Question? Oh, I think there's two of us.
Go ahead, Neil.
Two of a question on LISD connectivity. I don't foresee the state or federal making up that gap for them. But if that, if something were to happen, where having provided those funds, they later had access to funds that would reimburse all or part of that grant, we'll call it a grant, do we have a provision for that? And does that make sense?
So you could certainly have that type of provision, but if that dollar amount, councilman, I don't know if I'd recommend that. But just because I think LISD, the cost of that connectivity is going to be fairly significant. So we could certainly have that included if you wanted. But I don't know if, if that would really, you know, be, be that necessary at that dollar amount. But that would be a council decision.
I will, I wanted to give you guys some numbers as well to, to follow Donna. So LISD had provided me the total project cost for their connectivity, which was to get 8,000 iPads and 3,500 hotspots, was for, over $4 million, about $4.5 million that was unbudgeted. They did receive about, let me see, they received two, a little bit less than $2 million from TEA using CARES funding, but that was all that was covered. So they are out-of-pocket significant amount of dollars, and that's just from what they have had previously spent, not what the ongoing costs are going to be.
Yeah, so I think their next step, they're really looking at some type of towers, cell tower connectivity. Claire, you want to talk about kind of what they're looking at?
Yeah, so LISD, they are, their chief technology officer is very excited to do something much more long-term. So this, he thinks that this is just a Band-Aid. So he's looking at, you know, potential satellite, you know, leveraging satellites, as well as possibly doing towers, using, partnering with other local agencies such as ourselves to be able to co-locate on some of our vertical infrastructure. So we have talked to them about, it's not right for this council meeting to propose anything, but we have talked about potentially future partnering with them, what that might look like to help our, the children and, and our community that are low to moderate income be able to get free Wi-Fi without getting these hotspots, because there is a lot of logistics associated with that. So there is big projects on, on the future that we, I am not qualified to be programming them, but Chris Lee will be heavily involved in that, in the discussions. And I think what I got from LISD is that they plan to schedule something in the next couple of weeks to a month to start that discussion.
And certainly, councilmember, I, I think when you get into those type of dollars that they might be wanting to partner with the city on, then certainly, if they got federal funding to reimburse that, you would certainly want to have a reimbursement provision. So I think we just have to take it a step at a time with LISD.
So I, I had a question regarding LISD as well, because I believe when we talked about this connectivity project, I want to say that was the one meeting that we had in person, which was maybe last June. So, you know, it's been six months since we talked about it. I'm not, I, I, you know, I think that we were all on board with it. I'm not quite sure.
Council on the Green, you're cutting out.
The reason that it's below the line for what we're approving tonight, maybe it's just because we're going to be funding it differently? How much?
I, I didn't hear all of that, you cut out. Can you repeat that?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I was just saying, it's been a long time since we talked about that. And I think we, we're all on board with the LISD connectivity project. So I was just asking why it's not up for approval, different than it was last time? Is there, can, can, so can we move it up and approve it tonight? I mean, it was, it's been six months since we talked about it.
I think we could.
Yes, I think, I, I think that maybe this graph might be confusing. Someone is saying it's below the line. It was just because it was not, we needed, we wanted to have a touch point with council tonight before we decided to reallocate funding. But just so council knows, LISD has not held back. They have, this was supposed to be a reimbursement anyway, through CV funding. So they have been full steam ahead. This was really just to help them with the financials on, on that and partner in that. So nothing has been held back. The project has gone completely forward, and we definitely have kids that have connectivity that did not have connectivity before. And like Donna said, if you'd like to move forward with the allocation tonight, you can, I will say though, they are drafting the agreement, so whether you want to do it tonight or later, it, it's going through two governmental agencies and their legal council, so probably by the next council meeting would be fine as well. So it's your decision, though.
So you have the other items, though, too, Claire. Could they not just approve all four of those?
Oh, yeah, I think so, as long as legal's comfortable with that.
So really, you, you kind of had the process of working on the workshop, and then the item 11, and there were two separate processes. So as I was looking at them tonight, if you wanted to take care of all of them, were comfortable with council, I think you could. Liz, do you have a problem with that?
Is item 11, does it contemplate that?
It contemplates using COVID-related funds, and so we would just be changing the number. You could just, if you just wanted to do the LISD connectivity, you would change it from 1.9 million to 2.05 million.
Say that number again, to the manager.
So right now, it's 1.9 million. If you added just the LISD connectivity, you change it to 2,050, 2,050?
My concern, council, is that item 11, the administrative comments are very clear on what, what is under consideration. So I would feel more comfortable if we put it on next, we, we posted it properly and put it on the next meeting.
Okay, we'll bring you back.
Okay.
I prefer to do that anyway, but, yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Green, is that what you were concerned about, too?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just worried about the, you know, the, it took six months between the last time we talked about the LISD one, and I was just kind of wanting to push that one through. But if we can get it back next meeting, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, Claire?
That's it.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Donna, is there anything else we need to go through on this?
No, that would be the, the community needs survey. Then the second one would be our economic development update.
Okay.
And we have Jason Moore and his team to present that, mayor.
Good.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to share my screen. All right, I trust that worked.
Did, did.
All right, so we want to give you a quick update on where we are, what's happened over the last year, and actually, two years for an annual report status update. We do an annual report every year, and an economic growth report about every five years. And then these two reports will, Christina Williams will share those with you and those updates. We also want to update you on some new tools. We briefly talked to, to you guys individually about Buxton and the analytics tools that we now have, and kind of the power behind it, and share that with you, as well as our business retention expansion efforts throughout 2020, being in the office and how we've managed that. And then just a quick update on current projects that economic development has partnered, or that you have partnered through economic development agreements on. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Christina Williams, our economic development specialist, to go over our annual report and economic growth reports. Christina?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present some of the highlights from our economic development annual report for 2019 and 2020, as well as going through our benefits of economic partnership, which is essentially a growth report from 2016 to 2019. So to begin, I just wanted to show a snapshot between 2019 and 2020. For both these two years, there have been 20 council-approved economic development agreements. This includes our 380 agreements, abatement agreements, and facade improvement agreements. And some, from these agreements, we've seen a lot of variety of developments start to begin, from mixed-use residential to relocation of headquarters, expansion properties, and catalyst projects, such as Erickston Project, and their very impressive five-dreary factory, as well as our first transit-oriented development project, which will be our old town here, in Old Town. One of the numbers that I wanted to point out under 2019 was this minimum capital investment amount. So it's a little over $108,000, $108,000,000. I think of this number as a baseline. So for 2019, that's over 108. For 2020, that's almost 100 million. And this is really an amount that is negotiated and approved through our ED agreements. And so that is something that is, these businesses are committed to bringing. And this is essentially everything that is going into developing and construction of property on site. So that's all the actual property improvements, business, personal property, and all of that. Then another number to point is this 15.5 million in anticipated annual taxable sales. Again, this is another kind of baseline number that is brought by a few businesses that have committed to bringing in at least this amount for their sales tax alone. Next slide. So among investment and sales tax numbers, one of the benefits that we look forward to is the bringing of new jobs. So over the next few years, we'll see over 900 jobs come into the city. 400, 500 of that alone is due to Erickston. Of course, Erickston being a huge project in the city, it really solidifies Louisville on the map, and it sets the stage for a lot of other businesses in the similar industries to see why Erickston chose Louisville. Of course, it's for our attractive business climate with the low property tax rate and location to the airport and the I-35. But they also saw that we have a growing workforce base, and we have ongoing developments that are going on to the city. One thing I wanted to point out is that aside from the new agreements that come in each year, we still see the lasting impacts from agreements that were approved from previous years. So that 108 million, I kind of talked about- So that 108 million I kind of talked about earlier, what that really translated to for 2019 was actually more than 660 million in taxable value. So that is kind of the results, the end results of all of this. And so that's really about 2.9 million that goes back into city revenue. And I'll kind of touch on this a little bit later, but it's a really great picture of just the momentum that comes from these agreements and really seeing a lot of the lasting impacts and benefits to the community. Next slide. Moving on to a little bit about Old Town, I just wanted to touch on some of the projects here. Of course, we've seen a lot of growth and development and a lot of it comes from these economic development agreements. And so I've highlighted just a few of the projects from 2019 and 2020. Of course, we've seen all of the restaurants come in. We're starting to see the residential come in, units that are added to it. And I know that Jason is going to touch on a few of the projects for Old Town that's coming up. As you know, Old Town is in our tax increment reinvestment zone number one. And because of this, we've seen a lot of public projects come of it. And as we work towards the expansion of Tourist One, which had gone before council in December, we'll see that it only continues to drive and allow for more opportunity in this Old Town area. Next slide. In wrapping up these annual reports, I just wanted to give a side by side comparison between 2019 and 2020. You'll see the number of certificate of occupancy issued for new businesses. Of course, with 2020 being the year that we've had, we've seen a huge impact on a lot of our businesses, restaurant and those types of businesses. But I really just wanted to show that there is still growth in 2020 and that we see a variety of new businesses still opening up in the Louisville area. With that, I'm going to present a little bit more on our benefits of economic partnership growth report. And this report dives in a little bit more into the partnerships between the city and our business community. And what we wanted to communicate with this report is everything that goes into these economic development agreements. I think when the community sees these agreements come across our desk, they see who it's with, what they do, and what we're offering them for them to choose us. But in reality, we know that there's a lot more that goes into these economic development agreements and what comes out of it. So from 2016 to 2020, there were 45 council-approved economic development agreements. Again, this is 380 abatement and facade improvements. And this report is, along with our annual report, is something that is available. It kind of gives, it goes into a little bit more detail, but this is just pretty much a preview and a highlight of those reports. Next slide. So as a whole, and I think when we've sent this out, that bottom number was actually 13 million. We went back and looked at this again, and we were able to capture a little bit more additional tax revenue as far as construction sales taxed and other sales tax entities. But what you see is just a graph between 2016 and 2019 and broken out as far as the incentives that were dispersed and the tax revenue that came in. So it's the property tax, sales tax, and all of that. A couple of highlights for 2018, you'll see a spike. We had the grand opening of Mary Kay in that year. We also saw one year of occupancy for Ferguson, which brought in some really great sales tax numbers. And of course, our increased sales for Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. For 2019, one of the incentives for Mary Kay was a startup grant, startup grant, which included construction sales tax. And so we see that being paid out in 2019. So you can kind of see the difference there between the two. We also had some residential projects come up and the grants associated with that. And so overall, we see that, you know, the property tax value, you know, really goes into benefits for the city, county, and school district as well. The sales tax value goes into our general fund where, you know, percentages goes into our 4B fund, crime control and fire prevention. Aside from that, of course, we, again, we go back to, you know, what it brings into our community and it's the number of jobs. And with those jobs, it's the annual salary that's brought in and it's quality jobs that we want for residents and potential residents. And along with that, we're also hoping to foster community support. So whether that looks like monetary support from our agreements or it's being able to connect our businesses with each other and as well as with local organizations, organizations such as the Chamber, Workforce Solutions, our educational solutions, so that we can kind of work together and continue that momentum. So in closing, I hope this gives a little bit better of a picture of what all truly goes into it. Again, these reports are available, but with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jason.
Thanks, Christina. And Mayor and Council, just so you know, these reports, the reason that the growth report goes through 2019 on this chart is obviously we don't have all of the revenues coming in from property taxes and such until really technically the end of this month. And so we reconcile those numbers and by February, we should have the final report through 2020 for you. So this being a preview, we just wanted to show you that this, some of these highlights, but you'll have this actual report sent to your inbox next month. So you can anticipate that. Next, we're going to get into the analytics and the software we're pretty excited about to share with you. And Drew Christ, another economic development specialist here with us, is going to go over that tool and how we're using it going forward. So Drew?
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be here presenting. I'm really excited to share with you all that the Economic Development Department has partnered with Buxton. They are a data analytics firm located in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. They provide software for businesses, local governments, and other agencies to observe and understand economic and demographic trends that are occurring in their neighborhoods. Buxton Scout platform, which you can see here on your screen, integrates consumer data with a geospatial map and functions as a consumer analytics tool. It can produce deliverables and reports that assist us in our business attraction and retention efforts, so we can share in the future with you all more wins like Christina just discussed. The Scout platform allows our economic development team the privilege of near real-time data throughout the DFW area. And it's composed of two separate tools that I get to discuss today, Mobilitics and Match. Next slide, please. So Mobilitics, what is this tool? It aggregates mobile consumer data and displays it on our map. And that sounds pretty simple, but it's really powerful because it can also include information from individual and household surveys, credit card companies, merchant sales, census data, and even integrate information from the major credit reporting agencies. Now regarding data and privacy, none of the tools that I'm going to discuss tonight are, provide individuals information. So all location data that you see is shifted geographically by Buxton themselves. So it's an area, not a specific point. And reports that we can generate are only available if there are more than 50 unique mobile devices in a location that return a result. So I like to remind people that even though we can see trends in large groups, the software cannot identify how many times that I went to Chick-fil-A on Main Street last week. That secret is safe between me and Chick-fil-A. So how can we use this data? Well, it allows us to understand what demographic groups, households, and are visiting a specific business or an area. And that will give us an insight into who the actual market is for that business. We can compare consumption, household demographics, like income.
Like household size.
We are also able to observe what Experian calls psychographic segmentation and market data, which can help us provide insights to the business community. Next slide, please. So this segmentation bubble chart displays the 71 different household types in the segmentation ecosystem that Experian has identified. Now, what you're seeing here is on the Y-axis, you have a young and older household distribution. On the X-axis, you have a single versus family household. And then kind of as you move from lower to higher on the chart, you're seeing a greater household income. So Experian determined these groups by finding common traits between households like the three we just discussed, how income, how many household members there are, and even their credit score. Now, you'll notice that seven of these groups are circled with red circles. I have specifically called these out in order to show that these seven groups are actually the largest segments in Louisville. And in a second, on the next slide, we'll be able to see where those seven groups are actually located in our city. Now, so each one of these seven groups represents roughly greater than 5% of Louisville's total population. And just to give you some bearing and an idea of what kind of different traits are these groups, if we're looking at O-54 in the bottom left-hand corner, that household is going to be marked by a household income of 50 to $75,000 on average. The average age of that household is usually going to be between 25 and 30, and they're on average going to have one person. Now, there's going to be changes and differences on an individual level, but as a whole, that's identified as this O-54. Compare that to the A-01 at the very top center of this chart. That's a household that is earning over $250,000 a year on average with an age between 51 and 65, and that on average has about five persons in that household. So you can see there's a wide variation amongst groups. And this bubble chart kind of helps map them out in terms of the different variables and demographics that we have. Next slide, please. So this map is a representation of the Mobilitics tool of where those seven types are located within these zip codes. So in other words, each dot on our Mobilitics map here represents a household. Each household is a member of one of those segment types. And I've also marked roughly the four zip codes here, just to give a kind of geographical bearing as we're discussing. So, so when we plot this data in the Mobilitics tool, we can observe some, some pretty significant trends about our city. Just to call out a couple of points that are pretty obvious to the, to the eye, the O groups are primarily the largest household segment in the 75067 area. You have the As who are primarily in the 75056, kind of on the Castle Hill side of 121. And then K-37, this is mid-range, middle family, kind of a medium-high income, which is primarily in the 75077 or on the north side of Louisville. Now, each one of these households is going to, because they have different incomes, they're going to have different consumption patterns. And the way that the private sector will approach them is completely nuanced. It's not a one-size-fits-all. So we can talk about our residents as Louisvilleans, but the private sector is really going to look at these areas very differently. Now, I want to call out some really interesting points about this is that you'll notice there's a lot of white space in our city. And why is that? Well, this map is only showing those seven types that make up more than 5% of our total population. So in other words, where you see white space, it is going to be a segment or a type that we haven't selected. So this is only seven types of the segmentation skillset. There's 60 some odd more types that are living in our city. This is good news. When you see a map like this, this means that we are extremely diverse. Whenever we're looking at the western edge of Louisville, there may be, these households may be composed of 30 additional types, which is 30 different segments of our population that are going to have different incomes, different family members, different ages, different consumption traits and demographics. And so it's not a bad thing that we have a bunch of white dot space here. It's just the way the map is displaying these specific segments. Now, one last point, in 75056, on the north side of 121, you'll notice an area that is very homogeneous. It's a lot of colors. It's a good mix of these seven segments. We, that is something that we strive for. We want to see people of different household sizes, ages, and incomes living in an area together. That creates a vitality and a vibrancy and a resiliency in our economic health and our communities. And so that area, it happened organically. We are trying to encourage that in our TOD in Old Town. So right now, where you see that white space, what we're hoping to do is determine ways that we can work with our, our housing providers, our businesses to replicate what we see on that northeastern edge in our Old Town area. Next slide, please. So how can we practically use this information? Sure, we know who lives where, but what does that matter? Well, the data doesn't just stop at, at who they are, but as I mentioned earlier, the Mobilitics tool can, it takes survey information from these households and these families and these individuals and provides that to us as a resource. So for example, let's say we have a business owner in Louisville who wants advice on how to effectively spend their very limited marketing funds. And as their partner, we, we want them to be successful, but I'm not a marketing major and I need data to be able to guide them on how to effectively achieve their goal. And so we need to know who their target audience is. Well, we have this tool that can provide that. So, you know, it kind of depends, where's their business located and what is their target customer demographic? The way that we're going to advise them on their marketing efforts is going to change based upon their demographic criteria. So if they're in 75067 and they're shooting for that O group, that what Experian calls singles and starters, we are very unlikely going to recommend that they send out a direct mailer to all of their households. Why? Because under this survey data, they are extremely unlikely to take a look at the postcards that end up in their mailbox. It's probably going to end up in the recycling. Now, they are much more amicable to, in fact, they're three to four times more likely to watch a digital ad, like on a YouTube video. So that may be something that we direct that company to. Now, compare that to the, one of the largest groups in 75056, which, which Experian calls platinum prosperity, is our affluent couples living in newly built communities. Interestingly enough, you would think they would be more open to getting a postcard in the mail. Apparently not. Under this survey data, they're just as likely to not be interested in that. However, they are much more likely to read an email directed to them. So if we can find a provider or direct them to find a company who has email, it may be worth their while to craft a custom, you know, authentic email inviting them to their grand opening. These insights are extremely valuable for businesses who are trying to enter into a new market. And this tool is going to really give us the ability to help guide those and those businesses and tailor fit a strategy for them. Next slide, please. So that's, that's a way to help with business retention and outreach, but what about business attraction? That's the other side of the coin. It's something important to our department. And this, this is where the Buxton Match tool really shines. So using some of the same data from the Mobilitics tool, the Match tool can compare a brand's existing locations and its performance to any location we choose in Louisville. Now, this is really helpful because we can see the customer potential using real-world customer data. So it's not just an individual telling us, we really want this here. We're able to show that business, we have the market for what you, you're looking for. We have the consumers. We know that they visit this area. We know that they spend X a number of dollars on this product or a similar product in this other community. This is an untapped market. So we can proactively provide feedback to commercial, retail, restaurant, property owners on exactly what brands and franchises they should be focusing on for recruitment efforts to a location. We can work with them on recruiting some of those franchises or brands to the area. And it takes the guesswork. It's no longer just a marketing packet about this is, you know, this is the story and this will be lead. We can back it up with data and actual mobile information and household-level data. We can back it up with data and actual mobile information and household-level data. Next slide, please. So to give you an example, we can even use this to compare two different brands to see which one fits our community best. This is a market study we ran for a potential grocery option in northern Lewisville. This is allowing us to reach out to not only the property owner, but the potential franchise and business owner and show them, hey, we know that you're going to be a good fit for us. Here is what Lewisville looks like. Here's our story. We want you to be a part of it. These tools are invaluable in helping guide our department's recruitment, redevelopment, and even our long-range planning efforts. At the end of the day, we can plan in the long term to attract any business that we choose. This tool is going to give us the ability to determine in real time as the weeks and the months change, what market do we have and what retail should and other business should be, should we be recruiting to our community. Once, now that we have this data and we can partner with our local property owners and our business owners in attracting some of these powerful businesses and these good fits for our community, we're really going to be able to attract some great businesses and businesses and operators to our area to help improve our city and to live alongside us and improve the quality of life for our residents. Thank you so much, Mayor Council, for listening to me and for giving me the opportunity to share some of the cool stuff that we get to do. I will hand the floor back to Mr. Moore.
Thank you so much, Drew. And Council, not to be, not to end this on a discouraging note, because I see Trader Joe's says it's not a match. So what we could do with the first part of what Drew talked about with the Mobilitics is understand what are those psychographic and those segmentation profiles? Let's say we want the Trader Joe's. That's what Council wants. That's what the community wants to see on a specific area. Well, we know what it will take to get there, to get to that hundred mark for each of those categories. And then we can appropriately recruit developers and such to make those investments, or at least present the case to the community on what it would take to get there. So that's an important component is the marriage between the Mobilitics and the Match Tool. We're obviously using both hand-in-hand. So now we're going to go shift gears to the BRE, the Business Retention Expansion Efforts. As you'll recall, in our last presentation, I think back in September, we were doing a lot of phone calls and I just wanted to kind of share with you a little bit more of the types of information we're using through CoStar, which is our real estate platform, commercial real estate platform. And these are just some screenshots of what it looks like in CoStar for us. We can grab anything from building size, lease expiration, the actual property owner, the building owner, the decision-makers, and have a direct line to them and then understand what their needs are. And that's what we've been doing since March of 2020, is reaching out directly to these businesses. If you'll remember previous to March, I think when we spoke to you in January or February of 2020, our plan was to do business walks with the Chamber, with Council members, with other community leaders, and to walk into a business, find out how they're doing. Are they liking Lewisville? Are they planning to stay here? And then leaving and just setting up further meetings from there. And that's a strategy we definitely want to participate in going forward. But in the meantime, these phone calls have helped. And I wanted to share a success story with one of our businesses in Majestic Airport Center. As part of these efforts, we talked to a business called Byra Insight. Let them know that the Denton County Grant Program was underway. And they actually applied for the grant. They received it. And they used the funding to pivot in their business approach. And now they're in all of the grocery stores and home goods stores around the area. And their sales taxes have significantly increased. So just making that one phone call made a lot of difference and obviously real revenue back to the city. And so we're proud of our efforts to this point. Our team, along with other departments, have been involved with this. And we couldn't have done it really as efficiently without CoStar. CoStar also provides us real-time data. They also pivoted as a company and said, you know what? For all of our municipal and brokerage clients out there, we're going to do daily updates to this data so that you can stay on top of where you are with all the industries. This is a key performance indicator. It's a summary chart for the retail industry. And you can see, this is basing everything off of a ten-year average. So the eight-point-three-three percent vacancy rate, that's what we currently are in our retail environment, which is not the worst it's ever been. You can see those standard deviations. We're within the first standard deviation of the average. And so we're not doing horrible on the absorption rate, which is, you basically have new development coming in versus what's being absorbed in the market. That's lower, and that's just because frankly, we're built out. And so you're not going to see a whole lot of new retail being built. But in other areas like market rent and sales prices, we're seeing almost historic growth numbers at this, to this point. So these are real-time numbers. And we're looking at not just retail, but office, industrial, hospitality, multifamily. We can look at all those platforms within this analytic tool. So from there, I wanted to give you some quick updates on some current projects. These are ones that we had ED agreements on that are finalized. And just to give you a status update of where they were. You'll recall, this was the former school district property. And Prototype IT had relocated their headquarters here to Old Town. And they've made a significant investment in this property. As of right now, they haven't had a ribbon cutting formally. They're slowly moving people back into the office where it's safe to do so. But they will eventually have their sixty-plus employees back in the office and to be able to share this great space. And they would love to give you a personal tour at your first opportunity. This was, they've also got eight thousand square foot of open space for lease that they're going to be leasing on the western side of the building. The backyard is unbelievable. They've got an event space. It's covered. They've got grills. It's just unbelievable what they've done to this building. And this was a facade improvement grant. If you recall, your efforts helped secure new storefront windows. So all the windows on the front were replaced and a significant investment, the overall property. But facade grant is what you see for this project. Now, this is the Aura of Old Town. It's intrinsic. It's currently under construction. This is the former Van Reek property. So we're looking southwest right now. And you can see they've got brick on the majority of the north elevation. They're working on the eastern elevation and the western at this point. This is still under, obviously under construction on the internal side too, but they are pre-leasing now. And they will start moving people in to the Leonard College, which is that northwestern corner first. And once, of course, they'd have to get their certificate of occupancies through the building department, but that is underway now. Main and Mill, this has been a question a lot of people are asking. We were hoping that this was starting back in the summer. There have been some delays with just the nature of construction when it comes to utility relocations from the private telecom and electric utilities. And it's not just a simple, we're just going to move our utilities out of the way. There's coordination with a lot of parties, private property owners, specifically several Main Street property owners. We're going from overhead to underground. And so there's a lot of coordination, but the project's still moving forward. They did go out and start staking out the property on the east side, which is the former K and W site. But that project, you'll remember, will have a hundred and seventy-five public parking spaces in a garage format on both sides of Mill, split between the two. So you'll have eighty on one side, ninety so or so on the other. And they'll have some retail and restaurant space. And we did meet with the developer last week. And they do plan to bring in some pretty nice retail and restaurant options for this space. And so that development partner was also in town, and they've got some really deep concepts. So they're looking forward to starting. I think they're going to start grading the first week of February on the east side where the K and W and Sonic site were. They've got to demo the AutoStart Building, which is the building between the Royal Affairs Ballroom and the corner. And that's their property as well. So they'll be demoing that. I think they're going through the permitting process at this time. That's a twenty-four-month construction. And so I want to just take this opportunity to mention the construction on this project is going to be very significant to impacts to traffic flow, at least on Mill Street. Putting a six-story building right on the property line, there's going to be probably tower cranes sitting in Mill Street. So we'll have to get traffic control devices and those things approved through engineering and public services. But this will be a little bit different construction environment than I think we're used to. But these guys are experts in this, in these types of projects. So I think it'll be pretty flawless. But we will be needing to work with our communications department to make sure that everyone is aware. This is the agreement with J Street that you just approved at the last council meeting. It's a forty-five million dollar project. They will be purchasing the REW Rue Sheet Rock business on the corner, that building, as well as the two buildings to the north of it. So this will essentially be the cornerstone of the Mill and Purnell, all the way up to the meat market for new urban frontage, walkable, what we call, I guess, the walk-ups. And so this will be four stories pushed to the street. They'll have a significant public art component that they'd like to work with us on right on the corner. And so this project is under, they're working on the design and we are working with them on the closing to facilitate the Rue property closing this March. So potentially all three properties may close in March and they'll own all three that can demolish those three buildings. However, the actual construction loan is an FHA HUDback loan. And that's expected to be finalized probably in July of 2021. And with, at that point, actual vertical construction could begin likely in August, September timeframe. And that's about a two-year projects from beginning to completion. So you're seeing some sequencing here. You've got Trinsec that's going to be coming online. Then you've got Main and Mill. That'll be coming next. And then this project would be following up shortly after. And so it's, that's actually a great sequence for the timing of the number of units being brought into the space in Old Town without getting too oversaturated with units. If you have too much density at once, you've got way too much competition. They cannibalize each other. And with this sequencing, it's actually working out great. All three developers are on board with the timing. They all think it's going to be a great success for Old Town. This is another project that we're still negotiating with the developer on the deal, the actual deal points. But wanted to bring it to your attention that we are still on track for a pretty quick start in terms of bringing design and construction to you, beginning this spring. And so you'll recall, we terminated negotiations with a former developer and began new ones back in November. And this will provide public restrooms at Wayne Ferguson Plaza. It'll be retail restaurants on the first floor, office retail, other uses on the second that are a benefit to Old Town. And then a third floor that could have an indoor-outdoor component overlooking the plaza. Another update for you, the restaurants. I know you all have probably been to Seven Mile at some point. They opened in June of 2020 in the former Prohibition Chicken Building. The Twisted Root Burger, we thought was, you'll recall, back in September, that building, as well as the former Cavalli's building, were sold. And we had to shift around some lean releases, if you will, for the various property due to the land ownership of the three restaurants. And we learned in November that the Twisted Root was no longer going to be a burger place, but was going to be a Baja Cantina, which is a Mexican restaurant. And the Cavalli's was looking to be a Primos, Mexican Kitchen. And when they found out that Baja Cantina was moving forward and actually began renovations in the property and permitting, they decided to forego the Primos and move to their Italian restaurant, which is called Sfereco. And that is a restaurant that's located at the Statler Hotel in Dallas. And so it's the same owner-operator as the Primos. They're just, they didn't want to have a neighbor competing with the same type of food. So they're moving forward with that. Both of those restaurants are anticipated to open by the end of March of this year. They've been moving forward with, at least the Baja Cantina has been moving forward with internal transformations and outside. They'll be working with the Old Town Design Review Committee on signage and things like that. Quick update on First Park One-twenty-one. This one is the four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-square-foot building that was the former Coyote Drive-In site. That's what you see on this left picture, the big building. Just east of it are two buildings, which they call Buildings A and B. Those projects were all three completed recently. It's over five-hundred-thousand square feet total, probably closer to seven-hundred-thousand with the three buildings. They're looking at adding another two buildings just south of this. So far, it's over an eighty million dollars in capital investment with these three buildings. They're nearly a hundred percent occupied. They are a hundred percent occupied, I'm sorry, on the largest building and the middle building. And on the far east building, they're in negotiations with two leases for tenants. So that's great. They've got a very diverse types of uses here with showrooms, as well as advanced manufacturing. As Christina mentioned earlier, the Erickson project, they've got their CO. They're working on their LEED Gold certification, finalizing that certificate. This is over a hundred million dollars in investment, and it's a sustainable project. So the fact that it's LEED Gold certified is pretty substantial for this type of building. They would like to have a ribbon cutting when it's safe to do so. And we'll definitely make sure everyone here has the opportunity to be present. These are solar panels that are over the parking lot. And that is a water cistern capture system to recycle gray water on the facility. So that's just kind of what you see on the outside. There's a lot more sustainable functions on the inside of the property as well. We do anticipate, in talking to them, they are looking to partner with LISD and Workforce Solutions on some of these advanced manufacturing jobs and how they can provide help to some of the STEM academies in those classes that LISD is working on, as well as NCTC and MSU. And we've had a corporate roundtable recently that included Erickson. And they brought a lot of great information on what the future workforce is going to look like in advanced manufacturing. And it's unbelievable. It's humans teaching robots and robots teaching humans and basically everybody doing work concurrently. It's very impressive. And I think this is a key for how we build our talent pool going forward and how we showcase our talent pool to other industries, the biomedical and other advanced manufacturing. And so we've already, I think, secured a couple more that we'll be able to tell you about in hopefully a couple of months because of the attraction of the Erickson for our advanced manufacturing workforce. Finally, the Tower Bay Apartments. I think some of you have gone on tours. If you haven't, let me know and I can get you connected with the property management company. This is about three-hundred-and-fifty units or so. And they are still finalizing some little small touches, but they are leasing. There's people living there. They've got the parking garage completely wrapped. I think just about every space. You can see the lake. But it's very impressive. It's a great focal point as you come in from the north into Lewisville on thirty-five. You can see it. And I know a lot of you have been very impressed with the architecture component. And I think that's a lot with the developer working directly with our planning department on that. And I got one more slide here. So this is the Music City Mall. And we wanted to just give you a quick update. We've been working with ICA, which is the parent company of Music City Mall. Since they bought the property and really what their vision and how we can match the city's vision for this site with theirs and mold those into one, it's a really resilient opportunity. And then Zion Market came in and bought the Sears Building and shortly after bought the Macy's Building. And we've been working very closely with them. And so we've got both ICA and Zion Market ownership, working very closely with staff on how to move things forward for redevelopment efforts. The ICA folks bought the JCPenney's Building and did a leaseback last year, two years ago. And JCPenney's, of course, they announced their closing last September, this September of 2020. And so it's currently vacant. We've been talking with some other potential users for short-term opportunities. But really, the focus, and they are committed to a redevelopment effort. And the one unknown at this point is Dillard's. They still own their thirteen-acre point is Dillard's, they still own their 13-acre parking lot, as well as the two-story building. There are efforts with both ICA and some others in looking at acquiring that piece, and there could be some facility, you know, some city partnership to help close the gap or the deal, and of course, when we get to that point, we will, we'll visit with you during executive session. But those, the fact that there's only three property owners now makes this redevelopment opportunity more critical than I think ever before. The real estate agreements, the REAs, as they, as they call them, they're really difficult. If I want to do something at Macy's, I've got to make sure Dillard signs off on it and ICA. And you can imagine when you had Cinemark that owned their own space, JCPenney's, Sears, and you had the, the former mall owners, it was a little more challenging to, to cooperate, even to hold an event, you had to have everybody sign off on things. And so now that there's three, excuse me, there's more opportunities for kind of this coordinated effort moving forward and discussions with potential TERS expansion or a new TERS district. And so we're, we're very excited about where we are right now with the relationships we've built with ICA and Zion, and I think their eagerness to make something happen, knowing that this is not what you're going to see in the next five to 10 years, you're going to see something completely different. And so we've talked a long time, so I apologize for that. We are open for any questions that the council may have, and other than that, I'll shift it back over to the city manager.
Anybody have anything? Thank you very much, Jason.
Mayor and Council, that wraps up our workshop. Miss, there are any questions? If not, Mayor, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. You have the presentation next?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
This will be the regular session with the presentation to start.
James, James will introduce this one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to come to you, as we do each of the past two Januaries, with a very special presentation, our Spirit of Lewisville Award. You might recall, we started this in 2019 as we were looking at some volunteers in the community that just have a tremendous impact, and we recognize those volunteers as often as we can, but every once in a while, there's one of those that just sets a new standard. This, this award is designed to recognize individuals, organizations, or businesses that work directly and closely with city staff on a specific project or objective that has a positive impact on one or more residents of our community. And one of the key factors we use in evaluating this award is whether those, those accomplishments could have been attained by the city working by itself. There simply are things we can't do by ourselves, and they're very important things where we need help. And so we identified some recipients in the past who just reached that standard and deserved to be called out for that, and we are going to present two Spirit of Lewisville Awards this evening. I'm going to call on, I believe Kent Boring is a panelist on this call. Kent?
I am here.
Kent, is going to present our first Spirit of Lewisville Award for this year.
Thanks, James, Mayor and Council. Good evening. The City of Lewisville formed its Community Inclusion Task Force in 2018, and one of the group's key missions was to increase engagement with members of our growing Chin community. Soon after the group formed, Becky Nelson of Chin Community Ministries recommended Salai Leon as someone who could help educate city employees about the Chin culture and also could translate city documents into Hakka Chin. His contributions during the next two years were a cornerstone of the city's outreach efforts. He translated written documents and video scripts, he helped create a series of Chin language educational videos, he connected city staff with Chin community leaders, and recruited volunteers within the Chin community to provide input and advice to the task force. But his greatest contribution came in mid-2020 under very challenging circumstances. City staff heard from Salai and other volunteers that there was a potential COVID-19 outbreak developing in the Chin community. Language and cultural barriers were interfering with important messages about recommended health protocols and the importance of testing and treatment. Many members of the Chin community were unable to take time away from work in order to be tested, or they lacked transportation to distant testing sites. Salai was a key member of a small team that worked with Denton County Health Services to arrange for two testing events near Chin neighborhoods and churches. He talked to Chin pastors and recruited their help in sharing important messages about COVID-19 with their congregations. He arranged volunteers at the testing events to help with translation and other needs. The city would not have had the contacts or expertise to make this happen on its own. Thankfully, access to testing combined with prompt medical attention and improved public education prevented what could have been a very serious disease outbreak in a vulnerable segment of the Lewisville community. Salai's willing and eager assistance likely saved many Chin residents from serious illness and possibly saved lives. And for these reasons, Salai Leon is being recognized with a 2021 Spirit of Lewisville Award.
Salai is on the meeting right now. Salai? You can unmute?
Oh, yes, thanks.
This award is for you, Salai. We actually have a nice little plaque that we will get to you, but not through the computer.
Oh, thank you, James, appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything you'd like to share with council and our audience this evening?
Yes, um, good evening, everyone. My name is Lai Yan. I am very honored to get that award. It's meant a lot. I didn't expect that I will ever get it, or I didn't expect that I will ever have a chance to be invited on, I am be invited at the city, Louisville City Council meeting. I am very happy to see Mayor Roddy and Councilman and Lucili's staff and attendees. I appreciate it. And my heart is always about helping the people, and when the COVID-19 hit badly in the Chin community, my other community, and, and I just started doing in the way that I can, and I cannot stop helping them because there is, is a lot of needs that I see, and I keep driving my car, and I keep trying to reach many people as possible, and that people who I help them come and help me back, and that's how we contribute to the, the community a little bit better. And I would like to say thank you so much for, I thank you so much to Louisville's city, and especially Ken Bory and Jim, they are amazing. It's easy to work with them, and I know there is a lot of cultural, cultural barrier or issue, but, and that they are patient, and they, and they have respect, and they have pretty much everything. So we started connecting more with my community people, and I would like to say thank you so much also to helping us for the Chin Community Garden, it's meant a lot. I, and now we have 30 family members who are doing the Chin Community Garden at 884 Avenue, and Salvation Army let us do their property generously, we appreciate their help, and that garden now bring fresh vegetable or Chin vegetable to 30 family members, and it's meant a lot to them. You know, we come from culture that we have been doing garden in our entire life, in our entire life, and it's really mean a lot. And now, are many Chin become American citizen, and they graduate high school, and some graduate college, and they call Louisville their home proudly, and they love Louisville, and now they are contributing in many positive way. And in the future, for the Chin Community, Louisville looks so good, especially the leader, because of the leader of, the leadership of Mayor Roddy and City Councilman and staff. I feel that the Chin community is moving in much better position to contribute the community in positive way. And thank you so much for your continued support, and I hope that it will keep going, especially, I would like to invite Mayor Roddy to visit the Chin Community Garden maybe in May to see the Chin vegetable. Thank you so much for giving me the award, and thank you so much for giving me the time to speak here. I appreciate it.
We have relied very heavily on Salai with our work, and there's a lot of things we couldn't have accomplished without him, and at this point, he has not yet turned us down. We've asked him for help. He's always said yes, sometimes he said, I don't know sure how I'm going to do it, but yes, I'll find a way, and he has. And we've already recruited him to help us with the sculpture that will celebrate the Chin community when we install it in Central Park. So he's a very busy guy. Well, thank you for your work, Salai.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. And then our second award presentation, I will be made by Jason Moore, bringing him back on to the microphone.
Well, I hope she doesn't kill me for, for being on here, but Natasha, hope, you know, I'm not sure how advanced notice you got on this, but beginning in 2020, when the shutdowns began, you'll recall a shortage of hand sanitizers and COVID PPE in general. We had several businesses step up to the plate in Lewisville, but perhaps the, the most eager to help was Bent Distillery, and specifically Natasha and Ryan, not only turned over their, their equipment that is a, a business that creates, you know, they, they make whiskey and sell that, they completely shut down that equipment to facilitate the creation of hand sanitizers. And that not only went to Lewisville, but also to Dallas County, Denton County, public safety offices across the metroplex. And they did so without any complaints. In fact, they, they asked, they've, they've got so much supply that they wanted to be able to continue helping beyond just the initial surge of need. And so I know that they've helped so many people in our community, and we're grateful to them. And Natasha, thank you for being a, a part of this call tonight. This is, you are exactly why we have the, the motto of the Lewisville Way, which is value serve build, and so I just want to say thank you on behalf of the economic development and Lewisville team, city staff, but I think James has got another plaque for you as well, and hopefully we'll be able to see you soon and give that to you.
Well, thank you, guys. You lied about why I needed to be on this call, but forgiven. No, I really appreciate this, and this was totally unnecessary. We would do it again in a heartbeat. It's been a long year, and I told Jason the other day, but today's my first day back at work because I got COVID, so I've been out for three weeks, and this has been a real kick in the butt. I don't wish this on anyone, and I wouldn't change anything about what we've done in the past year. But yeah, I, I can't believe I had to follow Salai. Good grief, I'm about to cry over that. It's really heartwarming to see the great people that we have in this community, and y'all mean so much to us, and, I mean, we live here, we work here, and we've barely been outside of the four blocks where we live and work in the past year. We've been to zero restaurants. I was unaware of anything going on with any of the restaurants. We haven't been in a bar, we haven't been in a grocery store, we haven't been anywhere. So we're excited to get through this period. I'm very excited to have some immunity, and I may have to go to Seven Mile Cafe for the first time, but we really appreciate y'all, and we know that you've been working hard and doing it from home as well, and I am not worthy of any awards, but please, by all means, if you hear of any nursing homes or medical facilities that need any hand sanitizer, we still have plenty, so we're more than happy to donate it wherever it's needed. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Natasha.
Thank you, Natasha. We, we very much appreciate you and Ryan and your business and all the contributions you make to Old Town and to the city. Mayor and Council, that concludes our presentation for the 2021 Spirit of Lewisville Awards. Unless you have any questions, we are, we are finished with our hour.
Congratulations to the winners. They deserve it.
Okay, we'll move on. City Secretary, can you continue?
Public hearing number one, continued public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from light industrial district to medical district on 9.25 acres, located at the southeast quadrant of Garden Ridge Boulevard and Valley Ridge Boulevard. The applicant plans to build a four-story, age-restricted, independent living facility with 192 units and is requesting medical district zoning. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Council, I'd just like to remind you, this is the item that the applicant has requested continuation to the February 15th, 2021 agenda.
Okay. Do I have the motion?
Move to continue.
Second.
February 15th.
For motion, second to continue. City Secretary, could you call the roll?
Show Deputy Mayor Protem Green made the motion, Councilmember Jones seconded the motion, Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Public hearing two, consideration of an ordinance adopting youth recreational program standards of care and compliance with Texas Administrative Code 745.1153. The camps and after-school programs operated by the city are exempt from state regulations, provided that the city council annually adopt youth recreational program standards of care. The proposed standards are updated to reflect the inclusion of after-school programs. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Director Parks and Recreation Stacy Naya is available to address any questions, and we have no speakers on this item.
Okay, good. Are there any questions from council? Comments? Okay. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Did you get that through?
I, I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. But motion is second for, to close.
Show Councilmember Troyer made the motion, Mayor Protem Ferguson seconded the motion, Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green? Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I did, yes, sir.
Okay. Motion and a second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, City Secretary, call the roll.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Chapter 10 Parks and Recreation of the Lewisville City Code by creating Article 7 Standards of Care for Youth and Recreational Programs, providing for repealer severability and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Okay.
Now, now.
Now you can do that. I want to apologize for not being at the last meeting. I was captured and taken to fly around, and I couldn't get out of the hospital, so y'all didn't want me here anyway, so it was working out well.
We're very glad you're back now. So show Mayor Protem Ferguson made the motion, and Councilmember Jones seconded the motion, Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay. Motion passes. Continue.
Visitor Citizen Form. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Mayor, I believe we had Buddy Bonner would like to speak tonight. Mr. Bonner, are you on?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Great, can you just state your name and address for the record before you begin, please?
Absolutely, and I appreciate the opportunity tonight. My name is Dr. Buddy Bonner, and I reside at 505 Drexel Drive in Lewisville, Texas.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmen and Women and Staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and I also appreciate the opportunity to live and work in Lewisville ISD and Lewisville, Texas. I come here tonight to share with you my intention in my filing for place one on the Lewisville ISD Board of Trustees. I filed on January 13th and look forward to a vigorous campaign. I'd like to tell you a little bit about that tonight. I've served three decades as a career educator in the district, and I'm seeking the office to continue my opportunity to provide service and passion for public education. I worked as a classroom teacher at Milliken Middle School. I was a campus administrator at both Briar Hill Middle School and Arbor Creek Middle School. I worked for four years as the central zone leader, and that is near and dear to Lewisville as I led the 21 campuses in the Lewisville High School feeder pattern with the 16,000 students and 1,500 staff members. And then finally, I finished up my term of service to the district as the Assistant Superintendent for Employee Services. I've lived in the district since 1991, a majority of that time in Lewisville. And I look forward to continuing to work with Lewisville and the surrounding communities. The, one of the things that attracts me to the area is the dynamism that's present in Southern Denton County and Lewisville particularly. You heard tonight presentations from staff members about the coordination with Lewisville ISD, Erickson, to promote STEM, and those are the sort of things that excite me about the district and excite me about serving on the Board of Trustees for the district. I sent all of you some correspondence several weeks ago, and I just want to revisit maybe the most important things to me about that correspondence or the platform items which I'd like to present tonight. I believe in the following. First and foremost, student and staff safety in all instances. I would promote and pursue strong academic, athletic, and fine arts programs. I would be an advocate for rigorous instructional services for all students. I would prefer and promote sound financial practices and management. As an old employee services administrator, I want to take great interest in the employment, development, recognition, and retention of great employees. I would like to work with a plan to pursue quality administrative succession. And then lastly, and specifically to council, I would be a big proponent, a strong proponent for cooperative and collaborative relationships between the board and various municipalities. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and share with you my candidacy for place one on the Lewisville ISD Board. If you'd like more information, my website is buddyforlisd.com. And I would also like to provide my email address to you, buddyforlisd@gmail.com. I appreciate your time and opportunity to speak tonight, and hope you have a great rest of the evening.
Nope, Mayor, we do not have anyone else that wishes to speak.
Okay, continue.
Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I've received no cards, and we have no hands raised.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second. Do you have a jury?
Show Deputy Mayor Protem Green made the motion. Mayor Protem Ferguson seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
Next item is item nine. Consideration of an ordinance updating the assessment service plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Five Project. This update to the service plan and assessment role identifies public improvement costs being provided by PID Number Five, along with related information concerning the current outstanding assessments and indebtedness. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do you have that, June?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any discussion before we move on? City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, updating the assessment service plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Five Project, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date declaring an emergency.
Okay, City Secretary, call the roll.
Show Mayor Protem Ferguson made the motion. Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you.
Item ten. Consideration of an ordinance updating the assessment service plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six Project. This update to the service plan and assessment role identifies public improvement costs being provided by the PID Number Six, along with related information concerning the current outstanding assessments and indebtedness. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do you have a motion, second?
The Councilmember Jones seconded that motion.
Did you say Jones or John?
Jones. Sorry, it's Max.
Yes, Jones did.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones.
Okay, is there any discussion at this time? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, updating the assessment service plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six Project, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date declaring an emergency.
Okay. City Secretary, call the roll.
Show Councilmember Gilmore made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, motion passes. Continue.
Number eleven. Consideration of allocating $19,900,000 for COVID-related expenses. During the January 4th, 2021 council workshop, staff recommended allocating $1 million to the insurance risk fund reserves for future liability related to workers' compensation claims. In addition, $400,000 was recommended for cleaning equipment and facility modification needs based on COVID precautions and to cover healthcare costs related to employees. Since that workshop, Denton County has requested assistance for city staff to provide vaccines. Staff recommends $500,000 be allocated to overtime expenses related to the vaccine distribution. The recommendation is that the city council allocate $19,900,000 as set forth in the caption above.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Presented.
Could you get a second?
I show Councilmember Troyer made the motion, but Mayor Protem Ferguson, will you second the motion?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion at this time? Okay, Counselor?
She doesn't have to read that one, sorry.
She doesn't have to read it?
She doesn't have to read it.
Okay, I just, I get every now and then a rule here. Okay, City Secretary, call the roll.
Show Councilmember Troyer made the motion. Mayor Protem Ferguson seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Thank you. City Mayor, would you have to say anything on item 11 before we move on?
No, Mayor, I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Number twelve. Number twelve. Consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency assigned by Mayor Rudy Durham until 11:59 PM on February 1st, 2021. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the CDC and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond January 25th, 2021. Recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay, do you have a motion? Move to a first? Or a second, whichever one you need.
I show Councilmember Jones made that motion, so.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So show Councilmember Jones made the motion. Councilmember Gilmore seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to reports. City, City Mayor, did you have any right now to speak tonight?
I do, Mayor. So I wanted to share with the council tonight the fact that this is Melinda Goller's final council meeting as a full-time regular employee. She does retire after 33 years of service with this organization at the end of this month. We do have a reception for her planned this Wednesday at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. It is very COVID-controlled, so you have social distancing. We've limited the number of people in the theater. We do have a lot of people, I think, that will be viewing by Zoom. So this is a sad night for us. I think Melinda's probably fairly happy that this is her last council meeting, but I just wanted to make you aware.
Thank you. She will be missed. Okay, now we're down to the council. We'll start with Councilmember Troyer.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. Have actually several items. I'll start with the MCL Grand. We've got, we did have a couple of black box performances or a black box performance to people and Texas tune performance, Hot Club of Cowtown and Beat Review Revival, sorry, with Pat Byrne. And both of those have been postponed, and I don't have an update on a new date. I don't think we've set one. Acoustic Jam coming up. On February 5th, they'll be doing this thing they call the Songwriter Challenge. The magic topic this time is chapter, as in a new chapter in your life or your creativity. And so people will be writing original songs around that theme and presenting them to an audience for the first time. Art Exhibits, we have World Cultures presented by Visual Arts League of Lewisville, and that'll run through February 6th. And then the Martin Luther King Junior Student Show, which was presented by LISD. The theme was of beloved community, justice for all, and that will continue on display. I've got two different dates. I'm showing the 23rd and the 20th, so why don't you plan on the 20th, and then you'll make sure you get there. And that to go see something in the gallery, you do need to call for reservation at 972-219-8446, or you can go online at mclgrand.com. And I recommend going online at mclgrand.com anyway, because there's lots of things to read there to find out what's going on. So a couple other things I want to hit on. We're starting to see Thrive introduce more activities for adults and senior, you know, members and seniors. And so scheduled is a salsa dance class for individuals held Saturday, February, every Saturday in February, I'll get that right, 2:00 to 3:00 PM. They're starting up a watercolor class. That'll be every Friday through May, 10:30 AM to noon. And then I saw they were doing something with genealogy, and I don't have the notes in front of me, but you can go take a look at Thrive online and see what all they've got. And then the last category I have is, I wanted, we didn't mention this from anybody else, but I wanted to point out a couple of awards the city got. The first one, we had gotten a bronze level award in 2015, 2017, and 2018 from DFW of Clean Cities for fuel-saving and pollution-reducing efforts in fleet vehicles. And then in 2019, we bumped up to the silver level, and this for 2020, we got the gold level. So congratulations on all the efforts put into bringing our fleet into fuel-saving and pollution-reducing efforts. And I think we should be proud of that. Then the other one is from the Texas Comptroller's Office. We received an award for the Comptroller's Transparency Stars Program in the area of traditional finance, and it recognizes entities for efforts paid in the way they spend their revenue and the information they make available on it. So a couple really nice awards for the city to be proud of, and I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that. We appreciate it. Councilmember Gilmore?
Sorry about that. Had to find my mute button again. It keeps moving on me. Mayor, I don't have anything this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
I have nothing to report, but I did want to say that I'm glad to see that you're feeling better, and it's good to have you back.
Okay, thank you. Okay, City Secretary, continue with the agenda.
Closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Number One, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Two, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations.
Okay. We'll take about five minutes before we get started, but we'll go ahead and go into closed session and take a little break if you need to. And we're now in closed session. We're back into open session. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to it.
You got that, June?
I got it.
Okay, call the roll.
Show Mayor Protem Ferguson made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green? Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Good night.